I need a motion to come out of closed session, please.
Second.
All right, all in favor of coming out of closed sessions indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Okay. Mr. Henderson, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, please. If you all would stand and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair. You need a motion to approve the agenda at this point, which is not on the agenda.
All right.
And in that motion, you should, the motion should also include removing items 4E, 4G, 4H, and 4I, and moving item 5A from the consent agenda to 4J.
All right. I need a motion to remove 4E, G, H, and I, and to add 4J, which is the general personnel board report to board action.
And remove it from the consent agenda.
And remove it from the consent agenda.
No, we don't need you now, because he summarized it. Exactly, he was looking at it.
But I need a motion.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda with the removal of item 4E, 4G, 4H, and 4I, and pulling the general personnel report up.
To 4J.
To 4J.
Second.
All right. All in favor? Indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? Okay. Agenda has been approved. Dr. Dunsmore.
Good morning, Madam Chair, board members. Thank you for coming in on this special call of meeting. I know it takes away from a lot of your personal schedule, so it is much appreciated. So, in an effort to keep things moving, we will go right along and hopefully not hold everybody up. First on the agenda are just an update by Dr. Harrell on our projects at Southern Wayne High and Northwest Elementary. I would like to add, before we get started, Mr. Honeycutt and I have had numerous conversations. And Madam Chairman, you were in the meeting with Mr. Hayes and myself and the county manager and some of the commissioners as we're moving forward that, once we get out to bid, we are going to put together a memorandum of understanding that all of our present funding will be steered towards these two projects to get them completed, and that we, as a board, are going to get behind that and get these done, just on the nature of the long time that they've been on the books. And then, as we move forward, we're working on an upgraded facilities plan that will include updates to present buildings as well as future needs that we will tie in with the work that the student reassignment committee's doing. So, we're hoping to have that done here in the next several weeks. We will present that to this board and then also to the county commissioners.
All right.
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Dr. Harrell.
Good morning.
Mr. Vice Chair, members of board. Dr. Dunsmore, just to give you an update on our projects at Northwest and at Southern Wayne. Got good news at both of our projects. At Northwest, our civil survey is complete. I've been working with Ms. Wolf, as well as Tim Stewart with Park and Associates. Our last thing we're trying to iron out is our parking situation at the school. So, we're looking at a proposal to add some parking spaces out front, as well as to lengthen her driveway so to allow her to have more car stacking ability in her morning and afternoon dismissal times, morning when she takes in, so she can get people off the road, because we know that her school and Northeast are pretty similar and have those issues of traffic being backed up onto the road in the morning time and the afternoon. So, everything there is done. I actually spoke with Mr. Stewart this morning to give him our final ideas, because we want to make sure we do our best to keep cars and buses from not interacting together in the same parking lot. Also, at Southern Wayne High School, I spoke with the surveyor this weekend, actually spoke to him Saturday, who's completed the survey for Southern Wayne High School. So, that is complete. I'm just waiting for him to get the CAD file and drawing back to us. I should have that tomorrow. Spoke with Mr. Baker also over the weekend, and he has assured me that it would take about two weeks, once we get these files back, to merge the two together, our new building plan for the school, as well as the civil, merge those two documents and get it ready for bid. So, we're looking at about two weeks from there. Southern Wayne, I feel good about the project. I know we were shooting to have it out by the end of July, but a lot of people didn't realize that Southern Wayne, that was a larger area to survey, including woodland, and we had no existing as-built documents for that building. So, everything out there from sewer, electrical, communications, everything had to be individually located to find those things. There is one item I would like to include in the project. I've asked Mr. Baker to include it, excuse me. We do have some sewer line issues at Southern Wayne High School. As you're probably aware, the line that leaves that campus at the back of the school goes underneath the baseball field in left field as it exits the back of the property, close to the wood line. And we've had some routes to infiltrate that line, and Keen Plumbing comes about three times a year to jet that line out for us. So, I would like, I've spoken with Mr. Baker about including that in the project, have that line repaired while we're out there. So, all in all, I think we're on schedule, considering what we've run into. Obviously, we did have a couple of days it was very, very wet this last couple of weeks. We've had a monsoon in places to try and be outside and get it done, but I feel good about where we are at this time. Questions that you may have, I might be able to answer for you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
So, you're not anticipating this project to go out to bid for another two weeks?
Yes, sir. I'm thinking two weeks, by the time I get the document, hopefully tomorrow, get that to Mr. Baker at Pinnacle. It'll take two weeks for him to get it together and put it to bid. Now, we have the contracts for us, for the Southern Wayne project and for the Northwest project. I received those last week. We're finalizing those, to put those out to bid. So, all, everything, this paperwork is going on behind the scenes to get this done. Also contacted our timber buyer to let him know that we were done with that survey, the outside portion, so I'm just waiting for a phone call from him, because, as we had discussed before, he said at the minimum, he could potentially remove the timber before school starts, where the gem's going to be built, to get that out of the way. So, yes, sir, Mr. Henderson, I'm anticipating two weeks for us to be able to go out.
Chair, are you still anticipating that the timber would be removed before school?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, because our students return on the 27th in that area, so I think that we can get that. As soon as I talk to Mr. Rayner with his company, I can find out for sure what his plans are.
When we go out for bid, what is the timeframe?
The last motion that the board made, Mr. Henderson made the motion, was to have that project at Southern Wayne open for no longer than 45 days.
Okay.
So, when that one goes out, it'll be open for 45 days.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Dr. Harrell.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. Student drug testing discussion. Is that going to be Mrs. Strickland?
Okay, well, it was basically my understanding that I was just going to recap the board on what the policy committee had come forward with, and Dr. Mason, Ms. Burden, and Mr. West, if there's something that I missed or misstate, please step in and correct me. But for the rest of the board and for the public, we have been discussing the potential of a drug testing system being implemented. Initially, it was for, or presented as, student athletes. As it worked its way through policy and through the attorney, we have been talking about anyone that is a part of a special project, of anything that would be a privilege. So, that would also include anyone that had a parking pass, anyone in band, anyone that did any sort of extracurricular activity that was seen as a privilege, not a right, to the students. So, obviously, within that realm, it would not be all students. And then, I think that there might be some discussion later coming into, would we include all students? So, there has absolutely been nothing decided on the drug testing at this point, but when you look underneath Board Action, you're going to see where there's a new policy on random drug testing for information only, and that is for each of you to begin to dig through, and please send your input to us, your opinions, et cetera. So, as we go through this in policy with the attorneys, we can have the feedback from the public and from the board on if this is something we want to do, and if we're going to do it, how we're going to do it. One thing we did have come out of policy was we asked Mr. Hayes to do a report on how much it would actually cost if we used the percentages per school that was based off anyone taking advantage of a privilege at that point. Have we received the numbers if it was the whole school?
No, we received the numbers with the percentages, right?
Just for the percentages.
By schools.
Of the privilege activities, not the whole school. So, that's something else we're looking at. Obviously, one of my concerns in lays is if you're going to spend the money on side A, where's it coming from on side B? So, that's some other things that I would like us to discuss as a board, as we work through this process. But there is no doubt that this is not something that the board is ready to move forward on at the next board meeting. This is going to be a process. Did I miss anything?
No.
Mr. West?
No.
Okay.
I would just like to ask, Mr. Hayes, did you get the email that I sent back to you when I received the?
I did.
Okay. Because I asked about whole school.
Well, and that's why I mentioned that, I didn't think we had gotten that one back.
No, we haven't.
Okay. Any questions from the rest of the board?
Any questions from the other board members?
I think I'll hold mine until we get to act one into the policy discussion, because I did review the policy.
I did have just a few questions, because whether we go forward with any additional discussions on this or not, to me, we need to make sure that we're inclusive of every potential issue that is a part of this. The first question that comes to mind, you know, we have a policy, we're talking about drug testing students. Okay, what is, what is, what is our, first, what is our reason for doing this? What's, where's the empirical data that says this is something we need to do? Okay, that's, that's the first question, and I have not seen that. Number two, once, if we do find a student that is, that tests positive for drugs, what are we planning to do about it? We're going, we're going to suspend them from school? We're going to put them in rehab? What, what, what are we going to do with that?
Yep.
You know, it's just, it's one thing to drug test somebody, but then what are you going to do? You know? So, it's, there's a whole lot more to this than just, do we want a drug policy? What, you know, why do we need it? What is it based on? And then, if you do do it, what are you going to do with the information, once you find out a kid tests positive? You know?
Well.
And then to, then to add to it, let's keep in mind that we have teachers in our school system and people here who work at Central Office who don't get tested after they get hired. They don't get tested either. So, let's, let's, let's make sure we're inclusive, if we're going, if we're going to go there.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with that at all, and that was one of my kind of X factors as, as we move through this, is I'd like to see the data from the other schools. And you, the gentleman that spoke with us said, well, we had a reduction from like 27% to like 5% of student athletes that were positive. That's wonderful, if that's our goal, to get them off, off drugs. But one of the conversations that I actually had with Mr. West after the meeting was, I personally feel that if we're going to go forward with this, you have to differentiate between the students that we already have the policy in place for, if you're caught dealing, selling, or consuming on campus, versus the students that may recreationally on the weekends, but they're an athlete, and then they hit hot. You cannot kick them out of school. I think it gets back into more of our grace and restoration that we've talked about before with students shouldn't, we should follow policy on, on the consumption. We should have those options to help them. Is our, is our goal to help them, or is our goal to punish them? And so, those are absolute options that this discussion's going to be for, and so we definitely want you to send these to us in policy as we work through it, before we ever get close to a vote.
Any other discussion? All right. Custodial services presentation.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, members of board, Dr. Dunsmore.
Before I begin, just to let you know, we have done our best to answer the questions that I know Mr. Smith had, Mr. Priggin had. So, I have a lot of information that I'm more than happy to share with you, or committee, or anyone, if you would like to dig into it deeper before you move forward with the potential decision here, because I know this is a very important decision for all of us and our county in general. So, what I'd like to do today, for the time that we have, is just to summarize some of the things that we've done, based on your request, and a couple of the general findings that, that we have, or that I've come up with, looking at the data. So, one of the things that, that we did, there was a request to look at surveying our staff members in schools where high standard currently cleans, and we have eight campuses that high standard currently cleans. And I'd like to thank Mr. Dirkson for helping me get the survey together very fast. Our survey had basically four questions on it. I did give staff the opportunity to email me if they wanted to identify themselves and to list some of their concerns that might not be addressed with the survey, and I did have a handful that emailed me and provided some valuable feedback, and of course, I replied to them and told them thank you for providing that feedback, and if they had any additional comments, they could contact me in length if they needed to. Excuse me. So, one of the questions we asked, just in general, was, are you aware that high standard cleans your building? And out of that, out of the 126 respondents, 97% said they were aware that high standard did clean their building. And that was a concern, because we know that we have some staff, sometimes it changes, and high standard's been cleaning these eight schools for two years now. One of the questions was, do you feel your classroom is in better shape as you get ready to come each morning? Is it clean for the instructional day? And basically, 48% said yes, and 51% said no, in that survey response. Another question we asked was, do you feel that your building basically was in better shape than what it was two years ago? And we left the opportunity here for our staff member to say they were unsure, because the staff member may either not be aware, or they may have not been with us the entire two years, or remember previous conditions of what the building may have been. Seven, excuse me, 31% said yes, they felt like their building was in better shape. 17% said they were unsure, which could address those staff members that may have not been with us for the entire two years. 51% said that they did not feel like it was in better shape. Looking at the overall, we gave a Lockhart scale of how, how satisfied are you with the cleanliness of your building? So, a Lockhart scale, of course, is one, being the least, to 10, being the most. So, neutral, I call that a number five. Neutral, we had about 12% of our staff that were neutral, they were on the border. 36% were from that one to four, and then 50 to 51% were from the six to 10, that they felt like the building was better. So, taking that, I had a couple of staff members to give me some feedback. That was very good feedback, as well as I tried to do my best, due diligence, to speak to all the principals. I spoke to the principals that have high standard. I also did a survey to principals that did not have high standard, to look at our current concerns they may have. The principals that I spoke with for high standard gave me some awesome feedback, great group of professionals. All in all, they were pleased overall with their performance that they had, their responsiveness. I had one principal say that their responsiveness the first year was awesome, they had slacked off just a little bit, but they were pleased overall. The biggest concern that I saw from our principals was that, and I got this from two or three, some really good feedback, was that they did an awesome job with our public spaces, our hallways, lobbies, bathrooms, they did a great job there. The concern was the same that was addressed from the principals, that was our classroom spaces, looking there. Excuse me, and it was detailed items, things like cleaning blinds, making sure the trash is taken out, making sure the room is swept periodically like it needs to be. So, it wasn't large items, it was detailed things that needed to be done. The other thing that was a good feedback from our principals, and again, I'm happy to go in this in depth, in detail, so you can look at all the items. There's a lot of data and information. Overall, when the principal surveyed, 94% of the principals, when I asked them, would you welcome an opportunity for someone like me to monitor and help you with your custodial's job performance and making sure your building is clean, 94% said yes. Now, these were principals that do not have high standard, so I had 18 to respond to that survey. I only had one really say no. Also had some questions about, are you satisfied with your custodial training? Well, I had 55% to say yes, and 47% to say no. Well, I've already told you at previous board meetings that we, we do not do any training for our custodial staff. Well, what that tells me, as we've discussed that, is we have a couple of schools that have some veteran staff in place, and that staff has done a consistent job. I did get feedback from principals that had some concerns about turnover. One principal said that they had been in school for nine years, they've had five different changes in nine years for our custodial staff, and they've had some inconsistencies. Also had some concerns expressed about level of performance and ability of some of our custodial staff. Some of the things that really come out, and I'm, and I'm happy to share this with you, now, I'm a, I like to try and be organized, and I like to have some things that I make recommendations. As I looked at this, and I'm happy to share those with you in depth, one of the things that come out is, as far as high standard goes, they do a really good job at the public spaces. There's some concerns in our classroom areas, but I'll break that down into a couple of different things. Number one, I think we really need to look at our job descriptions of our individuals and our employees. We really need to look at what our day porters are responsible for, and what any contractual service person that we hire, I'm not just saying this for any cleaning agency, to make sure we're clearly defining what we expect out of our employees, as well as what we expect out of our people that we contract services with. For example, I had one principal tell me that they would speak to the day porter, and the day porter would say, well, that would be not my responsibility, that belongs to high standard. And then, they would speak to high standard, and high standard would say, well, that's your day porter's responsibility. So, that could encompass some of these things, that there's a perception that it's not getting done. The other thing was making sure, and I know I've mentioned this, and I not want to take a more responsibility, but having some process to be able to monitor what is going on, and setting a goal for what we want, what we expect, and then be willing to invest in that goal. For example, one of the concerns that a principal had was maintaining their floors, and having training for maintaining floors, and having those floors shiny the entire year long. Well, they're look beautiful at the beginning of the year, and then we might redo those floors in high schools at the semester break, but during that period of time between beginning and the end of middle year, what do we do? Well, there can be systems and things put in place. If this is something we want to do, then my passion would be, then we decide, we make an investment in that, and we're willing to put resources to get this done, as well as monitoring things on Saturday to double check, make sure things are done. And I have other things, as I gleaned this data, I like to come forward with steps and processes to help make job better and easier for us. So, I can continue, but there's a lot of data. Mr. Smith had concerns about the intangibles, and to address your concern, Mr. Smith, one of the questions we did ask was, would you have a concern if you had your building cleaned at night, and then if you had fewer staff in the, in the campus? It was really interesting, that question. A lot of the principals felt like that they could get things done better at night, simply because of the traffic in the building during the day. As we've been principals, we know what our custodians have to do, and you've got 750,000 people in the building trying to get all of this done during that day. That question seemed to ring true more with the elementary principals, and it was anonymous. I did not ask the principals to give me their information, but you could tell by their responses that in the elementary level, those principals feel that these staff members build a bond with their students and are more part of the family. Where high school, of course, is spread out, there's so many things going on. So, your intangible question seemed to come more into with elementary grades than it did with our middle and high school. So, if you, if you have that, I've summarized a lot of data for you very quickly. Again, I'm happy to speak with the committee, or speak with any of you, and, and share this individual data. I told everyone in this survey that is anonymous, unless they wanted to share their information with me. Again, I had a few staff members, as well as the principals, but even this information I can share does not have any specific identifiers that tell you who said what, for when or where. I did have one principal talk about training, and when I asked that specific principal about training, their concern was, their thought would be, they welcomed high standard because their training level should already be there, versus what our particular level may be. I'm sorry.
Okay, Mrs. Smith.
I had to give him instructions. I'm scared of opening my mouth. Mr. Harrell, excellent summary. I appreciate that effort, because that is definitely something that we felt that would be necessary in order for us to make an informed decision going forward. The, you and I worked together in this school system in years past, and you and I remember a time when we had a department called Auxiliary Services, and Auxiliary Services was headed up by one of the assistant superintendents, and it was broken up into four divisions. You had technology, you had transportation, you had operations and maintenance. And it's my understanding that operations and maintenance have been combined?
Yes, my understanding right now, as I'm talking with Mr. Lassiter, is I've, because I've been and met with my departments, that operations is under maintenance now. So, Mr. Lassiter is technically the director of both areas, and he has an office at both locations. He has an office in the operations department, and of course, at maintenance, and he does go over to operations a day or two out of the week to see and check in.
Well, that, that leads me to my, my question and my statement. When we had a separate operations department, whose main focus was custodial duties, that is primarily what they focused on, system-wide, I don't recall having some of these issues that you brought up. And, and I'm not saying that maintenance cannot handle it, I'm not suggesting that. I'm just suggesting that there, there being a focus, someone dedicated to this, instead of one person having an office in two different locations, seems to me that we might need to have an individual whose job is to make sure that our custodial, custodial staff is highly trained, and someone whose main focus is the custodial responsibilities throughout the school system. And, you know, he's retired now, but Mr. Sutherland, Sutherland was one of the best there ever was. And we just didn't have these concerns then. So, I mean, just your thoughts on that?
I, I think we have a couple. Your, your thought, and you're correct, we worked together for a while, and your thought is the same as mine on, on some pages, is when Mr. Sutherland was here, and that department was separate, and the standard was there, and Mr. Sutherland was the one that did go out and did check on custodial staff. And then, and we did have some level of training provided from vendors, and those that would provide us with wax and, and those things there. I, I think there's a side of that as well, Mr. Smith, where we have some schools that right now it looks like have had some stability with custodial staff. I know Mr. Sauls and Dr. Mason, we've had some concerns about turnover in our custodial ranks and trying to maintain folks. One of the principals told me that their current staff, I think they've got a custodian that's been there for two years now. And so, when Mr. Sutherland was here, we were in the routine, and he was there checking, but then he also had some folks I actually grew up with, working with, you know, because I did custodial work as a part-time summer job, and they were there, they just tried in the building, it was home, everything that they did. And over the years, I think we've, we've lost some of that with our turnover, as well as I, as I have honestly tried to answer Mr. Henderson's questions when he asked me about training. We do not. So, that's where I think the difference comes in, where those principals say, 55% said they're happy. If I were to dig into that a little bit deeper, I, I think I would probably find that they've got a more tenured staff or head custodian. Because I think in years past, when I was at Southern Wayne High School as principal, I had an awesome staff, but they had been in place. And when I had a vacancy, the head custodian would take that other person under his wing and would help make sure these things were done, as well as some additional training.
Did you have a question?
I have two short ones, when you're.
Okay. I wanted to address the, the area of understanding the job descriptions.
Yes, ma'am.
I attended a meeting yesterday, and I heard from some of our employees, and I also talked to Dr. Dunsmore today, and I, I realized that I don't think that there is a clear understanding of what this agency is supposed to be doing, and what the, the day porters are supposed to be doing. And then, the other part of that is that many of the staff members felt that the day porters are being, because they are limited in number at the eight schools.
Yes, ma'am.
That they are being pulled away. I mean, if you're doing, if you're doing a lawn, you're outside the building, but you're being called in, and they feel that some of the things that they are used to are not being done. And if it is the day porter's responsibility, then that could be an issue. And they need to understand what the agency is there for, and what responsibilities they have, and what controls we might have over that.
Yes, ma'am.
So, that, that really was a clear concern of mine, that staff needs to be made aware.
Yes, ma'am.
And then, maybe we will know where we need to focus our attention to get the job done, because basically, the teachers are in the classroom, and they feel that the classroom, some of them feel that the classrooms are not clean like they were when they had a full custodial staff on campus.
Yes, ma'am, and I, and I agree. Yes, ma'am, and I agree, Madam Chair, with your statement and with looking at our job descriptions. Some of the data that I gleaned back from the principals was positive in that they thanked the board for the grounds crew proposal. Because one of their thoughts there was, was that as we move those responsibilities away from these individuals that are working inside, that will help them to focus on just the buildings and the details. Because there's a concern that some of our principals addressed with, as you know, schools getting ready to be started back and our custodians are, I spoke with one principal that told me they take one day out of the week and they do nothing but mow grass that day, even during the regular school hours. And the staff knows that on that day, they do their best to take care of their own house, so to speak, unless it's an emergency, because the custodians are doing the best they can to maintain these campuses and grounds. But I do think as we pull those responsibilities back, we need to address all of our job duties for even our custodial staff. Because if that's on their description for what they've done in the past and now if they do not have to do it, we need to address those as well.
Okay, Mrs. Strickland, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, no worries. First question, do you know when operations and maintenance actually merged?
I believe that happened, Ms. Strickland, and board members that have been here longer than me, please correct me, but I believe that happened around 2015, somewhere in there. You know, when we had some concerns, I'll put it that way, and then it was merged and it was added under Mr. Lassiter.
Okay.
At the time, and I believe that's how it had stayed. So when I look at the organizational chart for my department.
That's what I was thinking, it was further back, but if you don't mind.
It was further back, I believe, Mr. Pridgen.
And it may be.
I think it was when Dwight Lynn left.
Or Mr. Sutherland when he retired.
It had to be before 2011 or 2000.
Dwight Lynn came back to clear it and that's when Dwight Lynn left.
Okay.
So if you could just give me, you should, it's in me to text, just as a basic, you know, this was the year, just because it really does help put this together of when we started to see some of the issues that we've seen at the schools. If it happened two years ago, well, that's definitely one thing we need to look at. If it happened 15 years ago, it's a different way to approach this. Second question I have actually has to do with some of your initial data to make sure that I heard properly. I have mama brain this morning. You had said, I think, that when the teachers were looking over all of, is the building better, yes or no? Fifty-one percent said no. That was the teachers, correct?
Yes, ma'am. So that question was worded, do you feel your building slash classroom is clean each morning when you enter to begin your instructional day? So 51.6% said no, 48.4% said yes.
Okay, so that was on classroom, but I thought that the classroom was the 48, 51, and then there was a building better, that was a 31, 51.
Yes, ma'am. So that was the next question we asked. So we basically asked, do you feel that your building is cleaner or in better shape than what it was two years ago?
All right, so that was the first half of that. The second half you mentioned, but the overall satisfaction with your 1 to 10 scale was that 51% said it was better.
Yes, ma'am. So 50.7, 12.7, I call neutral because they were number five. And then 36.5 were either 1 to 4.
So that was teachers as well?
Yes, this is just teacher.
That was just teachers. Well, I guess that's where my concern was, is you have 51% in one question say it's worse and in the exact opposite question, it says 51% say it was better.
Well, you've got one question that looks at.
Classroom.
No, not the classroom one. Now, this is, that's why I eliminated that one. The question after it was, building is in better shape.
I'll tell you what that tells me.
Yeah.
Tells me that after school owners are spending more time in the hallways than they are in the public places than they are in the classrooms.
Well, they are.
And that's why I wanted you to survey the teachers because I was hearing one story from the principals and I was hearing another story from teachers. And I understand the principal would go and overlook the whole school and look at the public places and see things and say, you know, this is really looking nice. But they might not necessarily be going in all the classrooms and looking at what's in the classrooms. And, but I was getting flack from the teachers because, you know, the jobs were not getting done and they were having to do it themselves and get their students to even mop their rooms and sweep.
Okay, this leads into my second half of this though, and so we can move on. But staying out of the classroom and staying strictly with the building better, yes or no? And building better on a scale. You have 51 that like it on one side and 51 that don't like it on the other side. That's completely contradictory to me, but that rolls into with what you were saying, Mr. Pridgen, is.
The general appearance of the school probably better.
Well, yeah, the general appearance is better, but they're saying on one side it's not and on the other side it is.
In the classroom.
No, 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 not the classroom. The other question, but let me go ahead and move to the last part and then I'll be quiet, is with that, if you take it back to the classroom, this would revert back to the 48% versus the yes and no on the classroom side. Do you think that could be fixed? Fixed is not the right word. But do you think that that percentage would increase if there was a direct definition of the day porters handle A and the night staff handles B? Because once I think that's fleshed out, you might actually see that classroom number change. But that classroom number has nothing to do with 51% say the building is worse and 51% say the building's better.
If I can diver.
I'm done.
I had a conversation with a parent, athletic conversation, great conversation with a parent. We talked for 45 minutes. In the end, the concern all boiled down to communication.
Right.
And I think in a lot of things, if we have to be willing as adults, tackle those difficult conversations, communicate and then have our goals as to what we want to accomplish and move forward. So, yes, ma'am, one of the things I've seen in the data, and I think the data supports, is when it comes to those schools that currently have High Standard, just that difference between what the expectation is that the day porters may have and the expectation per the contract that High Standard may have, or we need to clarify, that these are things. And then monitoring those things. Mr. Pridgen, to piggyback on your response, one of the things that I had as a recommendation was to limit what we do in our buildings after hours. For example, I know we have a school right now that is being used every Saturday. And when you're a custodian or when you're High Standard and you're trying to clean floors to get those buildings prepared, if you've got groups using your buildings, and I know we're publicly funded, I know we are open to our buildings being used by our communities, but we really need to think about that because as our custodians and High Standard work really hard to get these buildings prepared and they're moving through a schedule and they finish a building and maybe they finished a week to two weeks before children come back, but yet we're still having people on our floors and things done. That can cause a lot of frustration sometimes by those men or women that have to keep these buildings in check.
Tim, let me ask you a question about that. When people use our building, they have to pay a rental fee.
They should.
And part of that rental fee is for custodial fees, though. So why are we having that problem if they're having to pay for extra custodial services when they're using our facility?
My concern, Mr. Pridgen, is not with the fee for custodial services, it's the maintenance side of it. So my example I'd give you is as, so this particular school, High Standard's in, they've done the floors a week ago or more. But this group is still using our facility over the weekend, doors open, doors closed, air conditioning running, doors open, and those issues there. So, yes, they pay a fee for our custodians to be there, but if they're marking up, causing issues to the floors, we, I'm just using this as one example, or it could also be the bathrooms using those. It takes time for custodial staff to rebuff, re-stripper, re-wax a floor. So, yes, sir, you're right, we do charge fees for these individuals to use our buildings to hopefully cover those costs. But there's a lot of things that are the intangibles that you can't cover.
Or do you feel like we're not charging enough in fees?
Mr. Pridgen, I do not know enough to answer that question. My honest answer is I would need to see what our fee for services are or is currently for that.
I think it's currently $50 that they have to pay, is that not right?
Pay for what?
$50 per day.
$50 per event.
Well, we think normally we'll charge based on the number of hours that we use. It's usually in there a couple hours in custodial services. But it's mainly to, you know, to straighten out things.
So you're talking about trash and sweeping.
All right, let me call that one. All right, Mr. Smith and then Mr. Flowers.
Just to clarify something, Mr. Pridgen, all of the service, all of the patrons that are using our facilities are not paid patrons. We do have agreements with the city of Goldsboro, Rickard Parks Department, for instance. And they're, to my understanding, they're not paying anything specifically to use our facilities and they use them constantly, so. And so that's not completely so that everybody's paying. This so-called agreement between us and the Rickard Parks Department has them in our buildings all the time.
And we do have an agreement with Parks and Rec, a memorandum of understanding that was in place.
But it's no money exchange.
It's more of they help maintain our fields that they use and provide things there in exchange for being able to use some of our facilities. But, yes, sir, no money exchanges there.
Mr. Flowers?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Harold.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I can tell you've been working hard on this, thank you. To me, and listening to everything that everybody says, the real issue here, we're considering a contract with High Standard, but to me, it seemed like the real issue here is do we maintain our private custodial staff or do we contract? The bottom line is that's the real question here. And so, Dr. Harold, in the state of North Carolina, I think there's what, 120 some school systems? There's more than there is counties, but however many there are. Do you happen to know how many of those are contracted for custodial services?
No, sir, I do not know a total amount and a Durham County contracted for a while. I couldn't, I can find that out.
Well, I mean, I'm just curious. I mean, if 80% of them contract, then the collective wisdom of all of those counties seems like that would be something we would need to consider. If 30% of them contract and 70% of them continue to have their own, then that would influence me on this. As far as the survey goes, I could see how, and the survey is a good idea and it's good information, but I could see how that survey would somewhat be obscured by the fact of people that you're asking having allegiance and friendships that they have built with the custodial staff. And, you know, you're asking them, are you happy? And they think, well, you know, I'm really happy with my custodian. He comes and empties the trash every time I asked him to. You know, so I don't want to take his job away from him. So, and we're not doing that, but I could see how some people might would have that mindset. The businessman part of me wants to say that contracting this service is the best thing to do. And we receive numbers as far as the cost and everything, but when you've got a bunch of employees and a bunch of equipment, there are a lot of hidden costs that are not going to just show up in the numbers. Such things as just doing the payroll for those extra employees that's on us. That's not going to show up in your numbers, but that's going to be a cost attributed to us, the cost of duplication of equipment. Where I've heard you say that we've got so many lawnmowers scattered all over the county, way more than we need to cut the grass that we have, but we have one here at this school and one here at this school. So having heard everything that's been said, I might just suggest to the board, now, we have agreed to remove the ground maintenance and make a separate crew.
Yes, sir.
Those will be pulled, I guess, some kind of way out of our custodial staff now and develop this. I don't know exactly how you're going to do it, but we're not going to let anybody go. We're just gonna, we're gonna delegate that this crew cuts grass and does landscaping and these folks do cleaning in the schools. I might just suggest to the board that we go on that plan for a year and see if, because it's my gut feelings that everything's going to improve on that plan because if I was a young man and I was looking a job, I would love to do the landscaping at the schools, but I would not want to clean the schools. To me, it's two different jobs. And if we separate the grass cutting and landscaping in a crew and we have a crew that's happy to do that and enjoy doing that, and then we have our cleaning staff in our schools and go forward like that for a year or so, we might find that we solve a lot of the situations that we have right now, you know, by just changing that up. So that's consideration. We keep talking about High Standard as far as who we contract to do the services if we decide to go that way. We can make that decision based on the data that we have. And you're contracting them for a year and if they're, if they don't live up to that contract, we don't have to renew their contract. It's not like we're hiring somebody. When you hire people and then you have to fire them, that's not nearly as comfortable as not renewing a contract. So those are my thoughts on this subject. Thank you again for your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Flowers.
Okay.
One last, one last thing, and something that Mr. Flowers said. We, the proposal does not guarantee everybody a job, correct?
So our, as we had discussions, narrowed this down from three companies that are, were the only three that gave us requests for proposals, RFPs. We went with two, which of course was SSC that finally gave us presentations as well as High Standard. And High Standard's the last proposal that come forward from the facilities committee was to go with them, look at 40 day porters. As Ms. Burden had a concern about our people and we all do, we had discussions about looking at keeping 50 day porters. And then if we moved at least 12, 11, 12 over to the grounds, then that would leave us with, we'd have 62 people. And then High Standard has told us that they would be able to look at offering employment to those people that we have currently in place, because they're going to need to add to their crew to cover all of our buildings. So our goal obviously is not for anyone to lose their job, but it could be that someone is moved over to High Standard cleaning on their payroll, for lack of better words, and then others stay with us.
So in essence, while we are contemplating the possible options, there are no guarantees that everyone will remain employed. So there is more to this than just do we contract or do we maintain our own custodians?
Yes, sir, it's a big decision. There's a lot of variables.
It could change, it could mean, it could be a life-changing decision for a lot of our employees.
Yes, sir.
Because people will be leaving, people will be coming off the state retirement system if they go as higher standard, correct?
Yes, so High Standard pays more, as they pay $17.25 an hour, but they do not offer benefits at this time. They can, but they do not offer benefits at this time.
Just want to make sure we understand, there's more to it than just the numbers.
Yes, sir.
So Higher Standards offers no benefits at all?
They do with certain contracts. So for example, Madam Chair, they clean Mount Olive University. At Mount Olive University, the university requested that they include benefits in their package for those employees. So at University of Mount Olive, they are cleaned by High Standard, paid by the university for that contract, and they included in the charge of that contract the additional cost to make sure those employees had benefits. So that's somewhere, Mr. West, $22, $23 an hour when you look at.
Fire staff plus benefits.
Plus benefits.
Yeah, it's a little over $18 an hour.
But with High Standards additional pay, it's about $22, $23 for what Mount Olive University is paying them for cleaning services to include that in their contract. So they do offer that, yes, ma'am.
We have a, because we discussed this at our last board meeting and that was one of the reasons of going out and maybe getting a survey from some of the principals. But we've discussed 40 or 50, there's a possibility, we may need more than 50 day porters.
Yes, because, Mr. West, not to cut you off, the survey was really interesting, talking to the principals, because I did have a principal or two that just had a concern to make sure, they were not against the idea, but they wanted to make sure they had enough help left in the building to manage those daily things there. So you are correct, it could be, depending on the size of the facility, it could be one, two, or three, depending on how big the campus is.
Because I think everybody up here understands that a custodian is only a title these people have. They are a lot more involved in the everyday activity of a school. Some of these principals depend on these people for a lot more than just custodial services.
Right, yes, sir, and that's the intangibles. And it's also, I think, to keep in mind that when we did the request for proposal, we did the request for proposal based on a set standard or ID. we did the request for proposal based on a set standard or ideas it wanted to do. Any provider that we would potentially go for, not just, or go with, excuse me, High Standard, SSC, Jenny King, whoever does these large groups, we would come back and meet with them to negotiate exactly what's going to be on that contract. They put forth their bid based on what we put out, if that makes sense, so we would have to come back, Mr. West, if we move forward this and say, okay, we've agreed to do this, now these are the details, like some of the concerns that we've had, those daily classroom things, dusting, those things like that.
Since we're going to be the ones, we're paying the bill, so I mean, obviously, we need to get what we think is the best for every employee that we have. We may have some employees that decide, hey, you know, this is my chance, I mean, they may not want to stay employed at Wayne County Public Schools, I don't know, they can probably find a job making better, having better pay, but that's a decision they make, but we still need to make it the most advantageous for our people that we have. I mean, obviously, there's some people that probably need to be riffed, or may be riffed for whatever different reasons other than just the fact that we're going with another service, but I, it's just so, I mean, and I know, I appreciate all the work you've done, and you've done a tremendous amount of work, I don't want you to get frustrated, because there's a lot, it seems like you're getting, I don't know, we're just taking a shot at some of the things, but I, my concern is with the people that we have that want to stay employed, that are good employees, so.
Well, my goal is to do what's the best for children. So I, whatever you want me to do, I get it done.
And it is about saving, I mean, obviously, we want to save money.
Exactly.
And Mr. Hayes wants to save every penny he can, but, you know, sometimes it's, you know, there's an expectation in a school district and a school system, custodial services are one of them, if we can save money by going a different route, or, you know, restructuring what we do, that's fine, but at the end of the day, it's not all about saving money when you're dealing with people's livelihoods, so.
Yes, sir.
But do I think there's a better way? Yeah, because we do have some issues in every building we have, so.
Well, and I think this, I know we're going on and on, I do think that the data has provided some good data, as we do have some opportunities for improvement, some positive things we can do.
And I won't say anything else, Ms. Burden, if you'll let me ask one more question.
All right, I have witnesses, yes.
One possible explanation could be with the differentiation in the data, could be that you used the Likert scale for one question, and you used yes or no for the other, and when you're using different methodologies, you and I both know that you're going to get different responses depending on, so if we ever consistent with the Likert scale, for instance, throughout the entire survey, I think we may have gotten, we would not have had this contrast, you know, that's a possibility, would you not agree?
Yes, and it could be, when you, because surveys are always hard, when you're trying to put a survey together, and again, Mr. Dirksen helped me, so, which, thank you, I couldn't have got it done without him, the verbiage, the words that you use, nah, he did, it's all on my shoulders, if it weren't for him, I wouldn't be up here, stand behind me, Ken. But seriously, you're correct, a word here or there, someone can interpret that word differently, you know, sometimes the best data is what we're doing here, face to face to have input, so.
Okay.
Any other questions or?
No, thank you very much, Dr. Harold.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
At this time, I think we need to move to open comments. It was not on our, didn't we say, agree? We're not going to do it, okay, we're not going to do it, all right. We have to announce it in advance in order to do it, and that was a discussion, because we were trying to do it, but we have approached it from a different direction.
Yeah, Madam Chair, if I may, Board Action under Item A, my suggestion is that we pull that until we have an opportunity for Dr. Harold to put together some different information, but more importantly, to be able to have the additional comments and put that on the agenda for the end of the month's contract. If the Board is okay with that, my only request would be that we do an approval to extend High Standard's contract with the work they're doing now for a period of one month.
I take that recommendation and the advisement, and I would like to move that we extend the contract for High Standard cleaning for an additional month, and that we postpone any decision regarding the contract until next board meeting, where we can invite public comment.
Okay. I second that motion. All right, any discussion? All right, if you are in agreement with the motion as stated, would you please indicate by raising your right hand? Okay. And I guess Mr. Flowers has a no vote, he's not present. Okay. Now, to the attorney, I need to pull number A, or did I do that with the approval of the motion?
No, A was not pulled, it was just changed, and you just did that.
Okay, all right, so it's not a no vote. Yeah, it's not a no vote.
It's not, and Mr. Flowers is not a no vote.
Yeah, he's just not, he, okay.
No, it's just five.
Okay, so it's a five vote. All right, purchase orders and contracts, Mr. Hayes?
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have just a couple of purchase orders that need to be approved ahead of our next finance and board meeting. They're listed on the, your attachments along with the supporting detail. So, not sure, but I'll entertain any questions with Dr. Harold's help regarding these purchase orders.
To give you an update, if you'd like, as on those purchase orders, Abby's Carpet of Goldsboro for Thomas Road Elementary School, that was something that was on the 17, 18 small projects list, so that is finishing up, trying to complete that, and we can get that carpet done before children return there, so that money was allocated for that out of small projects. Our number two item, the Northeast boiler, and then Northwest is kind of in this together. Northeast, well, members, if you remember back in January when we had our nine and 10-degree days and had that week or so, it never got above freezing, the fuel line froze in the ground at Northeast, and our gentleman for maintenance went out there and actually had to bring up a fuel truck and run a line on the ground into there to keep the boiler running. Well, it has not been repaired yet, so we're getting, this is what, last month of spring, so we need to have that fixed, and what they would like to do is have that boiler converted to natural gas, as well as the boiler at Northwest Elementary School. We'd also like to have the boiler at North, excuse me, at Eastern Wayne Elementary converted to natural gas, too, it's not on here, but they're all the same type boiler, and when we convert to natural gas, the only time our mechanics have been out there on a call is when it is out of gas versus on the diesel and the fuel, which are quite a bit. So number one, the one in Northeast, we have no choice, it has to be fixed, because we have no heat currently right there. And then the rest of pest one, we currently, our pest coverage has lapsed, we currently have no pest coverage, so I would like to extend this contract for their pest coverage place, so we can get back and have it in our ability to treat, especially with children returning.
How long a period would that be?
For which one?
Rest pest.
For them to get started with the?
How long is it, if we?
For one year.
Yeah, the purchase order is for the entire school year.
Are they doing termite also?
Yes, sir, they'll do whatever. One of the things I'd like to do, this is another one of those contracts that I'd like to be involved in more, as we discuss things, to make sure this stuff gets done, I've addressed this with the principals at retreat, to make sure everyone knows where their pest management log is, and items are being logged correctly, because I've found some cases where some of our staff did not know that we have had a contract for things to be treated, and some things have gone untreated simply because of the communication work.
Would you double check that they're doing termite?
Absolutely.
The reason I'm asking that is they do my pest control at home, but at the same time, I had asked them that they would do a commercial property that I own, and they told me they did not do termite work. So, you know, if they're spraying for bugs, that's one thing, but if they're spraying...
Yes, sir.
I mean, the owner of the company told me he did not do termite work, and he referred me to somebody.
I have asked for the end of the company.
Okay, well, that's a question you need to ask.
Other question?
We're not laughing at you.
Dr. Johnson was on there.
We have a concern about the termites.
He's killing us over here.
I just said the bugs we have in this building are immune to whatever is sprayed in the business, so.
Well, keep in mind, one of the things I would like to do with Mr. Hayes's help is, I know I've heard all of you, since I've been back in September, had some concerns about contracts, and when things are up, I'd like to have more of a handle so that we do not have lapsed, especially with pest coverage, because when we have a lapse, it's like if you're home, that gives an opportunity for these things to fester up, or you can get it back under control.
Yep. I have a question. You said that Eastern Wayne Elementary also needs conversion for the, of the number two fuel oil burning boilers to the LP gas boilers?
Yes, ma'am.
It's not on this list, when are you considering bringing that to the Board?
Well, yeah, that purchase order, I believe, is already in the system, it just got missed when we were putting together this list. The cost is basically the same.
Okay.
So if it's permissible, I'd like to go ahead and get that, because we could potentially have these, especially Northeast, because there's no heat there now. Boiler's there, it's just not hooked up. We get that converted, as well as the other two, since they're sister schools, that would eliminate a lot of maintenance for our men going out there.
All right, so when we approve this, you are, we are including Eastern Wayne Elementary as well?
Please.
Okay. All right, so you need a vote?
Yes, ma'am.
I need a motion.
You're going to need to add Eastern Wayne to which one?
This one.
The list of purchase orders, it will be the same vendor, the same rate.
So we could add it as 3A, could we add it as 3A?
Or even number five, either or.
Or number five. I was just trying to keep them in sync.
I don't care as long as it'll be approved.
This would be with the rest of pest?
It would be with SPC Mechanical.
SPC Mechanical.
Yes, it's identical to the other.
And we have two there, so could we list it as 3A, or do we have to go to five?
Go to five.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase orders with the addition of number five with SPC Mechanical, doing the conversion at Eastern Wayne Elementary, was that accurate, not the middle school?
Eastern Wayne Elementary.
I second that.
All right, we have a second?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
This should be subject to legal review of the contracts?
Okay.
Subject to legal review of the contracts.
Yeah.
All right, we still have a second, Mr. Flowers?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor of the purchase order approval as presented? No, we had to add that on, didn't we? Oh, we added it on, okay. All in favor of following through with the purchase orders as presented, please indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion that we approve C and D as information only and F as a first reading underneath Board Action, as well as, well, I'd like to do 4J separate, so I would like to make a motion that we go ahead and approve C, D, and F as a first reading.
I'll second that.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor of approving C, D, and F as a first read? Please indicate by raising your right hand. All right. I need a motion to approve 4J, which is the General Personnel Board Report, and I will recuse myself.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve 4J, the General Personnel Board Report.
Second. You should include in the motion that Ms. Burden's recused from voting.
With Ms. Burden's recusal.
Second.
All right, any discussion? No.
Good catch, good catch.
I just caught myself. All in favor of the motion as stated, please indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. All right, now we have consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve, oh, go ahead, sorry.
A consent agenda is a group of items passed with a single motion and a vote. These materials and/or items are routine business or have been thoroughly discussed in committee meetings, open to the public, and attended by board members. No debate is allowed on any item included on the consent agenda. If a board member wants separate consideration of any item, it may be removed by request.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
All right, all in favor, indicate by raising your right hand. Any opposed? All right, closing remarks. We want to begin with Mr. Bridgen.
I have one.
Okay. Ms. Strickler?
I have no comments, thank you, ma'am.
Mr. West?
I have no comments, Madam Chair.
Mr. Flowers?
Excuse me, no comments.
Mr. Smith?
I have no comments.
Oh, this is a good role, I'm telling you. Dr. Doesmore?
No, I'm not following it, no.
I have no comments, Madam Chair.
My only comment is to thank you all very, very much, and for those persons that made presentations today, we truly appreciate it and the work that you've done to respond to our concerns and needs. And with that, all in favor of, I need a motion to adjourn. All right, I know there's no discussion, so you may indicate by raising your right hand. Okay, there you go.